Hello. If you are still standing, please take a seat. We're going to get started in a few minutes. So, thank you for coming to the first ever Napa City Council debate hosted by the Associated Students of Napa Valley College. We're going to start off the evening with the National Anthem, and following that will be a moment of silence for the Executive Director of Pathway Home, Christine Lober, the Clinical Director, Jennifer Golick, the Clinical Psychologist, Jennifer Gonzalez, and for those people who knew them and loved them, for those who are still struggling to recover, and for all the victims of less-publicized acts of violence that plague our communities every single day. And singing our National Anthem this evening is Zach Fenny, accompanied by Professor Austin.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we'd hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we'd watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there? Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
We will now observe a moment of silence. Thank you. All right. Who here is 18 to 24, please raise your hand. All right. This was a... Thank you for coming out. It's a big... I'm really happy. We often hear that our age group doesn't vote, so you coming out, getting more involved, is very heartwarming. Good evening. My name is Manvier Sandu, and I'm the Student Trustee for Napa Valley College. Before I begin my opening remarks, I want to point out that the emergency exits are the same doors you entered from, and the bathrooms are when you entered the main building on the right-hand side. That's where the restrooms are. Every four years, there is a presidential election, and it gets a massive amount of coverage. But how much does a presidential election affect your daily life? What does affect you directly is who your council member is. City Council has jurisdiction over an entire city. For example, if they wanted, they could impose a curfew on the entire city, or make it a fine to walk with your right foot on... Right shoe. I know these are extreme examples, but I want you to understand the power that lies in City Council. We live in a country that gives us all a way to be involved with how our nation operates, and that is by voting. Unfortunately, we aren't very good at it. A good example to show where we stand as a nation in voting would be to compare it to a student's exam. If a student gets an F on a test, we tell them, "Study better. Read the chapter again. Make notes." And even make a flashcard to take on the day of the test. And we tell them all of this because an F is not passing, it is far below average. Our voting average as a nation is an F, and for some reason, we are complacent. That must change. As a society, we all must hold ourselves accountable, and read what is on the ballot, read who the candidates are, and study the effects of a ballot measure, such as Measure C and Measure D. How many parents are in you tonight? Raise your hand. How many parents? All right. How can I expect you to be civically engaged when you might not know what chapter your child's on in school, or the names of their teachers? Maybe I'm wrong. I hope I'm wrong. Prove me wrong, and in the 2018 election, go out there and vote. Hello? When someone says something, freedom of speech is quickly mentioned, but when someone doesn't vote, does anyone say, "Hey, you have the right to vote, so go and vote"? Let me put it this way: if I have a jacket, and I don't wear that jacket, I will return that jacket. Well, really, my mom will take it to the store and return it. I'm not saying that we will lose our right to vote, but we sure are making a good case to keep it. Everyone here who can vote, must vote. It is imperative that we stay engaged, or else democracy will not be the same. And, on the topic of being engaged, tonight's topics will be housing, traffic, homelessness, tourism, Measure C, Measure D, education, and the proposed Napa Civic Center complex. I hope you walk away from tonight's debate with a better understanding of who these candidates are, and what their views are on the issues Napa is facing today and will face down the road. And with that, I'd like to introduce to you tonight's candidates: Ricky Hurtado, Mary Louros, James Hinton, Bernie Narvez, and Vice Mayor Peter Mott. And to reiterate, my name is Manvier, and I will be tonight's moderator. Tonight's structure will be first, opening statements by the candidates. Each candidate will get two minutes, then a five-minute interview with each candidate. After the interview, the debate portion will begin, and each candidate will get two minutes to answer, and there will be a couple minutes of open dialogue between the candidates. Down below, we have Anthony Pallotti, who will be doing time cards for us. From 7:30 to 7:45, there will be an intermission. Outside, there are question cards, so anyone in the audience that would like to write down questions, you can, and from 7:45 to 8:15, we will ask those questions. And following that will be closing remarks and the end of the night. I ask you refrain from clapping during discussion and debate, please silence your phones, and a final reminder, no posters inside, no waving them. And with that, let's begin with the first opening statement. We'll start from the right-hand side. You have two minutes for opening statements.
Is this on? All right. Thank you. I'm Bernie Narvez, and I'm running for Napa City Council because I love this country and I love this city. My family came here when I was five years old, from Mexico, and we came here with nothing. We came with little money, with no language or the culture, but with family and hard work, we endured hardships and, you know, a lot of hard work to get where we are, and learn the language, became U.S. citizens, and learned to be productive members of this community. And when we were younger, when I was younger, you know, we went from house to house, to a little shack, to low-income housing, and eventually owned a home. So, that journey resonates with a lot of people in our community, and I want to be there to help them. This country gave my family and myself the opportunities to be successful. So, when 9/11 happened, I wanted to give back to my country, so I joined the Marines. And through that, it was an honor to serve. And now, back in Napa, I got a lot... I'm very grateful for being in Napa, and I love Napa because it's been good to me and my family. Napa is where I met my wonderful wife, where my dad and I started business, where I became a homeowner, and my daughter was born. So, now, I want to give back to Napa. I want to serve Napa the way I served my country. So, as a City Council member, elected City Council member, that's what I'll do: serve Napa. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Vice Mayor. Thank you. Before I begin, I just want to recognize today, you know, it's great when sometimes you have an open seat on the City Council because it gets a bigger pool of candidates come out, and the fact this year that we have two Latinos running for the City Council for the first time ever, and we have three candidates under 40. So, it's a great time in the city of Napa to see new, young people engaged and see Latina representation in the candidacy. I'm going to read this, and I think you'll understand why when I get done. "My name is Peter Mott. I've served Napa for the past 12 years as a City Councilman and a member of the Napa Housing Authority. I currently sit on the Sanitation District Board, having done so for the last six years, and I'm an alternate on the Napa Vallejo Waste Management Authority and Napa County Flood Control Board. During the last 12 years as a council member, I have served three years on the Waste Management Authority, two years on the Downtown Pacific Plan, been a member of the Napa County Transport Station and Planning Agency, the Traffic Advisory Committee. I spent two years on the Joint City-County Affordable Housing Task Force, a year on the Napa County Gang and Youth Violence Commission. And prior to my election, I was a council... As a council member, I served two years on the Planning Commission and three years with the Community Development Block Grant Committee. As a member of the council, I have worked to develop and energize our downtown, including returning to two-way streets, establishing our in-house 10-mile street repaving program, improved multiple affordable housing projects, and eight new parks. But most importantly, I've been diligent in working to have a strong, solid, balanced budget. I've helped see the city through two floods, a massive earthquake, a major fire, and a significant economic downturn. Outside of my official council duties, I've worked to improve the lives of local residents in many ways. I formed the Association of Napa Neighborhoods, predecessor to what we kind of do these days in Next Door, which is to engage neighbors and neighborhoods. I reestablished with others the popular Fourth of July Parade and helped develop..."
15 seconds.
"...celebrating seniors, an annual event for our senior population. I am married to my beautiful wife Nancy, and I have two daughters who actually attend this school, and I'm a member of the Napa Sunrise Rotary Club, the Napa Elks, and the Native Sons of California."
Thank you. Thank you. And up next, we have James Hinton.
Hello, Napa Valley. I want to thank the Associated Students of Napa Valley College for hosting this debate tonight. I'm really excited about this opportunity. As a regular person that attends these City Council meetings, we get the opportunity to provide comments and ask questions about the projects they're discussing, but a lot of times, those questions are ignored and go unanswered. But with tonight's forum set up in a debate style, hopefully, some of the questions that I've been asking over the years at the Napa City Council will get answered tonight. I'm a lifelong resident. My dad worked at Mare Island. My mom worked in the wine industry. I was born at Kaiser Vallejo. I went to Pueblo Vista, West Park, Redwood, and Napa High. I have taken some courses out here at the college in 1993. It was $5 a unit when I signed up out here, and in 2013, it was $46 a unit when I signed up here. So, I've been around, I've seen times change. I'm running for City Council because I think we can do a better job of representing the people in our community. It seems like the City Council has a habit of rubber stamping everything that comes before the board, and they're just pushing projects through at alarming rate. And I wonder how much longer we can promise to give places like the Carneros Inn, 43 acres, feet of water per year for the next 50 years? How many more water deals can this City Council make? And can we sustain that? Because I want to make sure people like me, who live here, who grew up here, that for the next 50 years, I got enough water for my garden, for my pet, for my dishes. You know, we've seen restrictions, and if we allow our City Council to continue to rubber stamp these deals, we may run out of water someday.
Thank you. And up next, Mary Louros.
Sorry, mine has a cord. Thank you, Manvier, and the Associated Students for having us. Hi, I'm Mary Louros. I grew up in a little town just north of Sacramento, where my family's been farming for six generations. I moved to Napa about 10 years ago, a little over 10 years ago, with my husband, Jason. We started a law practice here in Napa, and I practice primarily business law and estate planning. I have two beautiful children, a three-year-old, a three-and-a-half-year-old daughter, the half is very important when you're three, and I have a four-month-old son. I am also... I was on the City Council from January 2015 to December of 2016, and I currently serve on the Napa Sanitation District Board with Pete. I'm running for Napa City Council because I look around Napa, and it worries me. I see my friends having to leave the city because they can't afford to live here anymore. I see businesses closing up shop because they can't afford the rent anymore. I see beautiful hotels that are... have very expensive room rates that I could never pay for, and I see restaurants that I can't afford to eat in, and shops that I can't afford to shop in, and I see an imbalance between what we provide for tourists and what we provide for our residents. I have the experience and the skillset as an attorney, as a business owner, as a mom, to do this job, and to do this job well. As a mother, I'm concerned about my kids' future, and I have a vision for Napa that we're severely lacking right now. So, I thank you all for being here, especially the students who are here, and I look forward to earning your vote.
Thank you. And Ricky Hurtado?
Let's see how long this extends here. Hi, everyone. My name is Ricky Hurtado. I'm Ricky Hurtado, and I just want to thank the student government for hosting this forum today. I'm a lifelong Napa resident, and it is an honor to be here. Born and raised in the city of Napa, I've seen it change. I've seen it evolve. To the people that I've talked to, they say the same thing as well. Come from humble beginnings. My family, who are in the back here today, my dad came at the age of 17, 17-years-old, worked in the vineyards. My mom has worked as a housekeeper here in the lodging industry, something that they still do to this day, that is, like many of our community members as well. In addition to that, when we first arrived, we didn't have much here in Napa Valley. We were living with one of my uncles, and just like many of our Napa families do here today. My family applied for affordable housing. I've lived in affordable housing, and it was hand-up, not a hand-out. It was a hand-up. It provided my family the opportunity to save and look for better quality of life to ensure that my brothers and myself had the opportunity to live here. I've also been involved in many boards and commissions here in our community, and that has been some of my experience. Been the vice president, president of the Democrats of the Napa Valley Club. In addition, I'm the president of the Napa County Hispanic Network. I bring a broad range of knowledge and what the City Council needs in today's Napa. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to close the first portion of tonight's evening, the introductions. The next portion is a brief interview with each candidate, the goal being to ask questions, which wouldn't be a debate question, but just to get to know the candidate a little bit more. And we will start this time from the opposite side, and we'll go down. Each one will be about five minutes. So, would you like to buy Ricky or Mr. Hurtado?
Ricky.
Ricky, all right. Ricky, the first question for you. How would you explain City Council to an eight-year-old?
City Council to an eight-year-old? City Council to an eight-year-old? That's funny. City Council to an eight-year-old? I remember having my little brother, who's here in the audience today as well, and who will be attending in the upcoming years here at Napa Valley College. I've always enjoyed government and the functions of it, from federal to state to local, and I think it's local where it really matters. I've had the opportunity to mentor him throughout all his course of his life, and I think I've had the opportunity for him to really understand the history of Napa and the changes that we need here in our community. So, how would it explain to now an eight-year-old, if I had a kid? I don't have a kid yet, but that is something that my wife and I are planning to do in the near future, is, you know, city government, City Council is a legislative body here in our community. Now, a little kid might be, "What is a legislative body? They pass laws to ensure that there's better quality of life," which is one of my priorities and one of my goals.
Okay. Thank you. Just one smart eight-year-old to understand what federal means. And one more question would be, just tell us a little bit about yourself, something that you already haven't said in your opening statement, just so everyone here can know you a little better.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Manvier. How I said, I've served on several boards. There's limited time, and some of the boards that I've been part of, said as the president of the Napa County Hispanic Network. I've served with them for over four years now. In addition to that, I've also been appointed to the Napa County Fair Association Board, where I've served, and now am the treasurer for the last couple of years. And I also am part of the fair housing of Napa Valley, making sure that we bring equitable housing practices here in our Napa Valley, from American Canyon to Calistoga and in the city of Napa. And I've served, how I said, as the vice president and president of the Democrats of Napa Valley. Yes, I am 26-years-old.
Final question would be, as 26, it is on the younger side. What motivated you to run in the first place?
What motivated me to run is seeing our community being forced out. There's recently a recent register article that stated that some of our students, there's low enrollment in our schools, and that is due to housing costs. Young families like myself can't afford to live here in our community. They're being forced to live elsewhere. And I want to make sure that we provide that opportunity to members in our community that are young, but also our aging population, our seniors. The city of Napa being the largest city in the county, we need to make sure that they also have a place, a place to call home. What inspires me is knowing that this is the place that I call home, and this is the place that saw me grow, and this is the place that gave me the opportunities to continue with my education. This is the place that I want to make sure that I provide an opportunity to other members of our community. And how I said, my wife is a local veterinarian here. We are planning to have kids later down the road, and want to make sure that they too have the opportunity to live here, that they have teachers that are quality, or teachers that are being forced out as well. So, those are some of the things that I'm looking at and that have inspired me. In addition, my parents and my wife, I mean, the hard work and dedication of my parents, their sacrifice to ensure that we had food on the table every single day, that's what inspires me.
Thank you. And we will move on to the next person down the line, Mary Louros. So, the first kind of funny question for you. What would the person who likes you least in the world say about you?
I'm trying... I'm thinking of the person. I need to actually think about what they would be saying. I think that they would say that I'm really determined and kind of, I don't want to say bullheaded, but when I decide to do something, I really go all the way, and it takes quite a lot to knock me down. So, I think that that's what they would say, that she's very determined.
Thank you. That was kind of an odd question to ask, but a little more.
I've had worse.
And the question that we asked Ricky as well. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Sure. So, I am, I already mentioned, I grew up on a farm. I am the daughter of an immigrant. My mom immigrated here. She became a citizen in the 80s. I am the first person in my family, I'm the youngest of five, and the first person in my family to go to college. I had a full ride to St. Mary's College. I majored in politics and minored in religious studies, the two things you're not supposed to talk about at the dinner table. And, you know, I didn't have any mentors really to kind of guide me in what you should major in and what you should do in college, and so I just did what I liked. And I got the opportunity to travel. I did a semester in Greece and a semester in France, and I was a congressional intern for a semester. And while I was in DC, I really fell in love with politics, and I met a congressman, or the congressman that I was working for, told me, you know, "It's really important that you find yourself before you become a public servant." And he urged me to go to law school. And so, I did. After St. Mary's, I went to Golden Gate University School of Law. I met my future husband there, and right after the bar exam, on March 1st, 2008, we moved to Napa. And we built our own, it was 2008, so the economy was not great. Nobody was giving us a job, and so we decided to start our own law firm, and we've been very successful. We're celebrating our 10th anniversary this year. Yeah.
So, you talked about opening a law firm. Can you just go into a little bit more detail of your experience in opening a business in Napa?
Well, in 2008, it was really hard to do anything. Every law firm in town, I spoke with, and they said, you know, "We're not hiring right now, we're firing." And so, it was challenging for us. One of the best things that I did was volunteer for legal aid of Napa Valley, and I represented, as a volunteer attorney, I represented a lot of tenants in landlord-tenant cases, eviction cases, and I got to know our community better and how to better serve people in our community. But it was challenging. The first couple of years, you know, we really had to build up a name for ourselves. Napa is the kind of community that if you're not from here, you really have to work hard to prove yourself. And Jason and I worked very hard to prove ourselves. We went to everything. We did Leadership Napa Valley the first year that we were here. We did, I did the Citizens Academy. I did everything that came my way so that I could get to know our community better, and I think that's the way you have to start a business here. That's the only way to do it. So, we've been successful, but it is a result of a lot of hard work.
Thank you. And we would like to move on, well, I would like to move on to James Hinton, and the first question for you would be, what would you like most about being a City Council
The ability to get more information about all these projects that keep coming before us. You know, a lot of these projects, they come up, and then they come to the Planning Commission, you get a few minutes to discuss it there, and then it goes to the City Council, you get another few minutes to talk about it there, and then these things get approved. And it's really hard in six minutes to sometimes express your opinion about some of these projects. So, I'd like to be able to have that kind of voice. I've really been an advocate for medical cannabis over the years. I've been going to our City Council meetings for four years straight, public comment, you know, "Good evening, Mayor, City Council, James Hinton," and I talk about why our city needs to have access to medical cannabis. And we still don't have access to medical cannabis. There's a lot of people who are suffering in our community, and they need safe access.
So, on the topic of that, what can Napa do to make it better for that community?
Well, Napa has began a permitting process, but it's very restricted, the zoning. They narrowed down the zoning to only a few areas, and in those areas, the landowners are really asking a lot of money, if they're even allowing it. So, it's making it really hard for people who want to get into this business, they want to serve the suffering patients. It's really tough. I mean, the state of California's already put in a lot of regulations, so just to follow those is hard enough, but the city could expand the zoning, definitely, and they should start immediately with recreational permits. There's no need to only start with the medical. It's just like alcohol, you have an ID, you're 21, you go in, you purchase it, and you go home.
Last question. Just briefly tell a few more details about yourself to the audience for about one minute.
Say that again?
Just a few more details about yourself, your background, where you come from.
Okay. So, after I graduated from Napa High in 1992, I started a small business, Ballpark Sports Cards, right across from the high school on Jefferson, on August 1st, 1992. I didn't even have my driver's license yet. I got that after my birthday passed at the end of the month. So, after a year and a half of that, I sold the business for profit, and I got into the wine industry, where I worked a total of six crushes, or harvests, you want to call it. I've worked at the big ones, from Sutter Home, Mandavi, and Behringer, and including a little Domain Chandon. I've done the champagne. I've also worked on probably over 50 bottling lines in that time at different wineries. So, I know what it's like to work... So I know what it's like to work in the wine industry on the production side of things. But after the crush ended in 1998, I found that my poker skills were really good. And I was able to make a living every day at the poker table that I didn't go back to the crush season in 1999. And I began a 15-year career as a professional poker player, where I would play at card rooms around the Bay Area. I've been employed at a few of them. And then we lost our right to play internet poker. And that's when I realized we had lost a lot of our rights. And I began to take a closer look at our governments. And I began a career as a political consultant, where I've worked on several campaigns throughout the Bay Area from initiatives to have medical dispensaries stay open. I was part of a successful referendum in the city of Vallejo, the only referendum that's ever been passed in the city's 100-year-plus history. I managed two school board candidates to victory last year in Vallejo. They were the top two vote-getters in each race. I've been working on a campaign to get lead-sheathed telephone cables out of our community. I'm asking city councils like Napa to send a letter to the telephone companies, asking them, do you have any lead-sheathed telephone cables buried here? If so, where are they? And do you have the means to remove them? So I've been working on a lot of different campaigns.
Professional poker? Sounds fun.
It was.
Thank you. And up next. So your first question, what's your favorite book and why?
Favorite book? Hit your string. I, um... You know, it's funny because you get stuck in your head what you went through in, you read in school. And then when you have children and start raising your children, then somehow those books get stuck in your head. And Good Night Moon is what's coming to my mind, which is so ridiculous to think of that as being your favorite book. But if I was to say the first thing that came to my mind, that's what it is. Because Good Night Moon is what I read to my girls at night many, many, many nights before they went to sleep.
I personally don't know what book that is.
Yeah, well, you likely will.
What is your favorite part about, what's your favorite thing about Napa?
Uh, well, honestly, it's, and this will seem simplified, but it's the people in Napa. And we see this over and over and over when we face hurdles, when we face adversary from floods. I mean, I was back here way back in the 86 floods and fires and earthquakes. How people come together and how the citizens of Napa take care of each other and look out for each other. And, I mean, from going to restaurants to make sure restaurants get back up on their feet, to the different instances where you hear of neighbors that don't know each other at all, running down the street and turning off gas lines. You know, that's what towns and, and people don't think of Napa as a small town, but in terms of the people that live here, we really are a small town. And we still have that small-town feel where, again, where I think, you know, people really want to be part of the community. They really want to be neighbors with the people that live around them. And so that's by far the best part of this community.
Yeah, and seeing how we acted after the fires and that whole process, I see why you would say that. Final question for you would be, as the only incumbent on stage, why should Napa reelect you?
Well, you know, it's always the question you get every campaign. And it's an interesting one because you think as an incumbent, well, I've done a lot of these things, but actually that's what the issue is. I think about the kids in school here. Again, my daughters are actually here, both here at the moment. And so in school, you're studying here two years. Maybe in college, you're studying four years. In whatever your path is. I've been on the council, this is my 12th year on the council. I spend probably 20 hours a week doing council duties. And it's like being in college for 20 years, or 12 years, I'm sorry. For 12 years, you know. So if you think about that, what you would learn over 12 years if you were in school that long, that's a big part of what happens on the city council, having served on the Sand District and the Wastewater District and been through general plan updates and been through housing elements and, you know, different issues within the community. They change over time and they ebb and flow. Affordable housing is by far our biggest, really, issue facing us right now. I've been in downturns in the economy where we looked at the possibility of rounding out fire stations. And I've been through robust economies right now where we're opening brand-new fire stations. And so that wealth of experience, it, as we move forward now into, you know, a whole new territory in terms of finding more housing, in terms of dealing with traffic, that 12 years makes a difference. And so that's why I'm still here and why I'm running again is that I think I'm the longest-serving member on the council besides the mayor. And those years and those different positions and through those different issues are still important, I think, as a body moves forward. It's great to have some young people on a body and new blood, but it's also important to have that historical knowledge and that expertise in a lot of different fields.
Thank you. And we will now move on to Bernie. And your first question is, what is your favorite public park?
My favorite? Say that question one more time?
What is your favorite public park?
My favorite? I like Kennedy, but because it's big and you can do a lot of things there. But I think my favorite one, and it pops in my head because of the master plan and being a past vice chair on Parks and Rec, that was one of the biggest projects that we had. But it has to be the Veterans Park because as a veteran myself, it pays tribute to the veterans that have served our country and instilled patriotism and self-service that's reflective of this community.
Thank you. On a slightly different note, the next question is a two-part. If elected, what are three things you think you can realistically accomplish in your first term? And how can we hold you accountable to those?
Well, accountability is very important. So I'd be careful with this question. My passion's always been helping people. And, you know, my profession as a business owner is that I've seen people leave our community. People can't afford to live here. So my first priority is housing, is building housing that people can afford. Helping with resources to people that work here to live here so they don't have to leave this town and commute back in. So creating a better system for people to build by here. Not just rent here, but also be, become homeowners. Because when I became a homeowner, you know, it was one of the most proud moments in my life to say, you know, now I'm permanent in Napa. You know, I've been a business owner for 10 years and I felt that was pretty permanent. But once I, you know, I got the keys to the house, it was a very proud moment in my life. And, you know, as I see people that rent, that were renting in Napa and leave Napa to buy somewhere else, you know, they were proud, but they were proud to be somewhere else. So I want people to get back to Napa so they can work here, they can spend their money here, they can contribute to our local economy. So that's number one.
Thank you.
And the second question, there's a second part?
Oh, the second part of it was how can we hold you accountable to those priorities that you think you can accomplish?
Well, my goal is to hold myself accountable by engaging with people, reaching out, always making sure I'm in front of people, talking to people, and reassessing their needs, you know. Because I may have a vision, but that may not align with everybody. So my job is not only to execute that, my vision, but make sure it's always aligned with all of you. Because it is you that matter. I'm running here because I want to work for you. I want to give back to a community that's been so good to my family and to me. Because my business wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the community that embraced us. So to hold myself accountable by talking, engaging, and listening to people.
Thank you. I'm glad you both brought up housing because our first question, which is coming up now, is on housing. Two conflicting issues have been brought up. Napa needs more affordable housing and Napa has a significant traffic problem. How would you balance these seemingly conflicting issues? We will start with the vice mayor this time and you have two minutes to address the question. And if you like, I can repeat the question.
No, that's all right. They are not conflicting issues, frankly. One of the biggest issues that we have, as you said, is affordable housing. And the reason that doesn't conflict with traffic is the reason we have traffic, you know. When we look at traffic studies, our traffic studies are generally, you know, there's some traffic all during the day, but the intense traffics during the morning commute hours and the afternoon commute hours. Those folks are commuting because they can't afford to live here. And if they could afford to find housing here and quality housing here that they could afford. Again, I have nothing against our neighborhood cities, but if you're working here and you have a choice of living here or Vallejo or Fairfield or Sassoon, I'm willing to say that a number of those people would choose to live in the city of Napa. We have great schools, we have a great community. So if we can solve the affordable housing issue, we can, I think we'll make a big dent in the traffic situation. Now, that being said, there's some new revenue coming in that's going to help us work improving our roads and our streets. Our plan, as we get our city hall, as we move forward in getting our city hall finished, is for a new traffic control center. And the way that'll work is there'll actually be a traffic engineer in front of a series of screens that'll be able to, because all of our traffic lights will be, not all, but the vast majority of the maps they showed us will be interconnected. They'll be able to actually manage traffic in the city as different parts of the city get more intense in terms of their traffic. So that's part of the IT upgrade we'll be able to do. You know, those type of things as we use more technology and move forward. Again, the real challenge is to get the housing part of it done. I think the traffic solutions will come with that.
Thank you. And we'll move on to James Hinton on that question. Want me to repeat it or are you good?
No, I'm good. How do we solve housing and traffic problems here? So, Napa Valley is blessed with a tourism tax that is assessed at the checkout stand when guests stay here. They pay 14% in taxes. 12% of these taxes go to the city of Napa. 2% go to the Tourism Improvement District. These tax dollars have gone to Visit Napa Valley and the Downtown Napa Association over the years, the Downtown Napa Association, excuse me. So, Visit Napa Valley has evolved into a $7.5 million slush fund that has very little oversight at all. The person running this fund is making over $300,000 a year just from this one agency. And that's more than our city manager, our police chief, or anybody in this town. And I think if this 2% is available at the checkout stand, that the city of Napa should pick it up and they should start earmarking that money towards workforce housing. We need to start taking care of the troops that are working here in these hotels. That's why we have a lot of traffic. It's because people are commuting from Davis, from Dixon, from Vallejo, from Benicia. They're even commuting in from Richmond and Pinole to come work at these hotels and in the other restaurants and the other parts of the tourism industry. And to battle that, we need to have housing, even if it's in downtown Napa. There is a project looming to build a super block where the city hall currently sits, which would be 275 boutique hotel rooms with 110 apartments. And 10% of those are earmarked for affordable housing. Okay, that's not enough. We need to do a better job in making sure we have workforce housing.
Thank you.
So we have traffic problems, increasing traffic problems because people can't afford to live here. We have a road system that was not built to accommodate the kinds of economic activity that we've developed over the last 10, 20 years. A lot of the funding for transportation is based on population. And our populations are 80,000 in the city, 140,000 in the county. But that doesn't include the 3.5 million people who visit Napa every year. We're not getting extra funding for that. Our roads are just not built for that level of service. So really, to address the traffic problem, we have to build more housing. When I was on the council, addressing, creating housing that is affordable was my priority. We took big steps on addressing affordable housing. We made it easier to build second units. We addressed enforcement of vacation rentals. We fast-tracked affordable housing projects. We upped our, increased our in lieu development fees for affordable housing. Unfortunately, not much has been done since then. There's no innovative solutions on the council right now for how to address housing. If I was elected, one of the first things that I would do is create an inclusionary housing ordinance. There's no reason why Napa shouldn't have one now. It's a policy that would require housing developers to specify a certain percentage of low or moderate income units for each residential development. So not only does it increase the amount of affordable units, but it integrates those units with regular market rate housing. So it creates some economic diversity. But in order to build more units, we also need more money. Napa County has to compete with all of the other Bay Area counties, most of whom have housing bonds that generate money. These grants require matching funds. And quite frankly, now that we don't have redevelopment agencies, we don't have those funds. So our economic growth keeps growing. We have a higher demand for housing and we're just not meeting the demand.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question again, please?
Yeah. Two conflicting issues have been brought up. Napa needs more affordable housing and Napa has a significant traffic problem. How would you balance these seemingly conflicting issues?
Thank you, Manveer. Well, how Councilmember Mott said, they're not conflicting. They go hand in hand. People should be able to work where they live. That's what should be happening and that would be one of my number-one priorities. We need to stop talking about housing. It continues to come up in every election cycle. It continues to come up every single time. But we need to start doing a little more. And I am committed to that. I want to make sure that we streamline the process of getting through, getting through permits and make sure that we streamline the process as well of getting affordable housing units. We also need to make sure that we have housing, yes, in the downtown area as well. This will also benefit the local businesses in the downtown area. Traffic is, I lived for four years in American Canyon. I really do consider myself a resident of the Napa Valley. Because I've worked up Valley, I've lived in American Canyon and I've worked here and I've lived the majority of my life in the city of Napa. Traffic was brutal. We wake up, go to high school, went to Napa High School, had early flight, had to wake up every morning at 5:00 AM to make sure that I got to class on time. My poor mom, she would make sure that my little brother was ready so we could take them to daycare. These are some of the people, like myself, who are going through these things. They're finding housing outside and they're trying to come into the city of Napa to work. So we need to make sure that we provide these solutions and I will make sure that I am the voice for our community because I've lived there.
Thank you.
So I also agree, you know, traffic can be mitigated by bringing more people back here, but how do we do that? You know, we talk about building, we talk about we need affordable housing. But it's a multilateral problem and it needs solutions from different angles. And I think that we build to, so when we build, we have to build with a design that makes it affordable also. It's not just trading funds or grant revenues and taking tax dollars because we can't depend on California or, you know, other budgets to fund us because it may not be there the next year, it may not be there the following year. So we have to design for the future. You know, as the next generations are coming up, you know, they're used to sharing. And in my experience, being in barracks and having roommates, I am, as a younger person, I think we need to look at how we design housing for our workforce. So having more... So having more shared spaces. So if it's cheaper for the builder to use shared spaces, then it's cheaper for the end user, for the buyer, for the renter. So we have to look at how to innovate design in housing for workforce, for workforce in Napa. Also is create more purchasing power so people can be homeowners. And in my experience, as a new homeowner, you know, I used a VA loan. That was a benefit to me, but many people in my community don't have that. If there wasn't for the VA loan, it would have been very difficult for my family and I to stay in Napa. So in that experience, I thought, we need to find something that's local, that can help them, similar to that VA loan. Something where we can have more equity share, something that's worked for, instead of a, similar to a down payment program, but creates more equity power for the homeowners to, somebody to buy a home here. So instead of buying, paying a full mortgage, there's equity share with the city or a builder that pays the new fees to pay a lower mortgage.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything else to say to debate one another? We have a few minutes to do that if anyone would like to speak up.
Just really quick, I also want to point out, as coming from the background of a son of a farm worker, we need to make sure that we provide housing to our farm workers and not just farm workers, but our farm worker families that are living here in our community, that are part of the wine industry and that are make Napa what it is today. I work, I didn't mention this, but I work in the nonprofit field and that's something that I've been working at for the last several years. I get to see our low-income families every single day. I get, I've got, I've had the opportunity to work on programmatic work and fundraising to ensure that we provide services to our families. So we need to look at this as a holistic approach as well to ensure that families that are getting close to homelessness don't fall into homelessness and make sure that we provide these services and partner with our community organizations as well, as well as with the county.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to know. I mentioned we have a project where the City Hall is going to become 275 boutique hotel and 110 residential units, 10% for affordable housing. And I'd like to know, is there a residential developer for this project and who it is? Because I keep asking this at the city council meeting and it keeps going unanswered.
We have a question later on in the evening on that complex. Do you have about 30 seconds to respond to anybody?
You know, I'm sorry to that. Let me just address a couple of things. Affordable housing funding is really difficult, so it takes quite a while. That being said, a lot of effort's been put in lately, contrary to some comments, in getting, removing barriers and getting funding done quickly. We break ground, we'll do a groundbreaking next week to Stoddard West out on Sausville Avenue by the Gasser property. And that project has 50 new affordable houses as part of the project. We've also done work at Redwood Grove, which had 34 new homes for sale, and Oak Creek Terrace with 41 new apartments. So again, it takes time to do, put some of these programs together. I'm working on a new program that's going to work more with folks who are involved in the hotel and restaurant industry. We're having some of that conversation about the possibility of doing both first-time homebuyer programs and rental assistance programs. And that's being done in conjunction with those folks at Tourism Napa Valley that were spoken about earlier.
Thank you. Mary?
I'll be really quick because I know it's intermission. All of the projects that were just mentioned were projects that were approved when I was on city council. Nothing has happened since then. And yet, how many hotel rooms have we approved since then?
Okay, Anne, with that, we're going to move on to the next question. What are your views on policies concerning the homeless population in Napa? And how would you approach that as a city council member? This time we'll start, we'll start with Mary this time.
So we, as a community, have put our resources into managing homelessness. We have shelters, we have support services. What we really need to be doing is focusing on ending homelessness instead of simply managing it. In Napa, we have about 300 chronically homeless people. That's one or two apartment buildings that we could build and be done with homelessness in Napa. It's a very real goal. We need to create interim housing and permanent supportive housing. That's why I'm excited about projects like the Heritage House, which is a Gasser Foundation development in North Napa. It will offer affordable housing to low-income residents and also permanent supportive housing for homeless people. It's the first of its kind in Napa and it's about time. Unfortunately, we're not doing enough to turn off the faucet and solve the reasons why people become homeless. Lack of affordability, affordable housing, low wages, inadequate social services. Do you know what the biggest challenge is for people who are in poverty in Napa? Childcare. If you have young kids, there are very few options for childcare in Napa while you work. And as a result, people can't work and they can't make a living wage and they become homeless. I think the Housing First model is great, but not if we can't fund it at a level that's necessary to meet the need. We, as a community, need to prioritize the citizens who need our help the most. And the way you prioritize something in government is by funding it.
Thank you. Move on to Ricky.
A lot of the homeless population here in the county of Napa and the city of Napa are people in our community, people that have lived here for many years. A lot of them are long-term Napa residents. Matter of fact, it's 41% have lived here between 25 to 49 years. 23 have lived here for over 50 years. These are our neighbors. These are people that we've gone to church with. These are people that we've played sports with. There's a lot of my friends that I continue to see. I work at Coop Family Center. Right in front of us is Hope Center. Get to say hi to a lot of our homeless population in the morning. Good morning, something that they need. We need to make sure that when we talk about homelessness, that we also approach it with wraparound services. Yes, housing first approach is great and we need to do that. But we also need to make sure that we provide the skills that they need once provided the housing. We need to make sure that victims, I say survivors, of domestic violence aren't prone to be living in homelessness. These are some of the things that I'm looking at. I want to make sure that I will represent while on city council. And we need to make sure that we really utilize, working in the nonprofit field, has really opened my views. And I think the city and the county are doing a great job working with Abode and making sure that we're providing the Housing First model to the homeless population. But let's reach out to other nonprofits. Just make sure that we support our community to the best extent possible.
Thank you.
So homelessness is a big issue. And, you know, it's not just housing them, but also providing services to, to help them get out of the habits that got them to being homeless. You know, opportunity, life skills, you know, teach them a way to be proud members of our community. And homelessness means different things. There's young adults that don't want to be at home and live in people's couches. There's domestic abuse victims that are trying to go to a safe place. And I think we have a lot of resources, but we can do, we can do a lot better. And it's not just housing them, but creating more opportunities for them to be better. When, when I was young, my family, we were homeless. We moved from living room to living room. The one thing that got us out of it was opportunities to improve ourselves, to learn, to do better, to learn skills, to be able, you know, afford out of being homelessness into a safer space.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, we're never going to solve homelessness. We're going to significantly make a dent in it, I hope. But we've been working on this, as every community in the Bay Area has, for years and years. Where we're getting is making progress. And we've done a lot of work here in the city of Napa between our emergency winter shelter to make sure that those most at risk have a place during the winter, making that available and funding it to make sure. Recently changing our South Napa Homeless Shelter to a wet facility, meaning they don't do drug testing or alcohol testing to come in. Again, to make sure that we can get them in a bed. Yet we go out and survey our homeless population every single year and we know that there are a number of them that will not take any services. There is also a significant mental health issue within the homeless and we need to keep addressing that. I was happy to hear Mary mention the Heritage House. The Heritage House is an old senior facility that is over behind the hospital that is going to be a multifaceted homeless center with onsite facilities to help them and some mental health care as well. I originally went in six years ago to talk to Joe Peatman, the president of the Gasser Foundation, about that various facility and making that into some type of homeless facility. Instead, I went through a process of trying to get developed. That process failed. Gasser became interested again, went through a number of funding processes and only just a couple of days ago received a million-dollar grant to get the whole program done. So that's coming online very soon. But again, it often takes many, many years to get some of these type of things done. So I think we're doing a really good job trying to deal with the issue. But as you know, and I think all of you recognize, it's a significant, extensive issue that is very difficult to solve.
Thank you.
So homeless is a big issue. Is this on? Homelessness is a big issue here. If you look at the east bank of the Napa River, north of Imola, there is a homeless encampment out there. And a lot of cities are tackling this different ways. I think right now, it's a little premature for Napa to come up with a game plan because ABAG is tackling this issue and very soon, they're going to be releasing guidelines that the city of Napa is basically going to have to adopt and to follow. And we need to put ourselves in position to where they give us the guidelines. We make the highest use of the funds available to go after the kind of programs that are going to solve homeless issues, like mental health issues. Now, what's exciting is Berkeley last, or Tuesday night, they passed a new ordinance unanimously to bring micro-units. And these are micro pads with 160 square foot. They're stackable and they plan on being able to rent these out for $1,000 a month or less, you know, depending on what the people are dealing with. But they're going to start using these micro pads on these micro-units to start addressing the issues there. So I think when we get the guidelines from ABAG, we need to be ready to take our money and apply them to the best programs to treat these issues that we have in front of us.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anyone to add? Does anyone else have anything to add to the discussion? Okay, we will move on to the next question. As you all know, Napa has emerged as an important destination for tourism. How are you going to balance the interests of the local community and tourism? We will start this time with Bernie.
Thank you for that question. So, you know, we allow tourists to come into backyard and enjoy our beautiful valley. And I think it's time for us to reap some of the benefits of what's coming in from tourist dollars and to address some of these issues with housing and traffic and homeless empowerment. You know, it's a good idea to look at TOT funds that are coming in and assign 1% or 2% of that to these local resources that are in dire need. Because if we continue to do this, you know, we're going to continue to collect money and not really bring it back to our community. We have to bring it back to the community and reinforce the dire needs that, you know, that we constantly talk about.
Thank you. Move on with Vice Mayor?
Yeah, always an interesting topic, the tourist industry. You know, we're fortunate, I truly believe we're fortunate to have a tourist industry in our town. It brings in 20, in this fiscal year, it's budgeted to bring in just in TOT, not in sales tax or any of the other avenues, $23 million into the city coffers. These are, these are high-dollar, low-impact dollars in that they don't have a big impact on our police and fire like it's tourism in some areas. And the only downside to all that is, and again, this goes back to affordable housing, is the fact that it takes a large workforce that isn't particularly highly paid. And so that workforce, we need to figure out how to house. Now, the Tourism Improvement District that was mentioned earlier is a self-funded. It's self-funded by the hotels themselves to promote their hotels. It's, that fund is, the management of that is by the group themselves. And I'm, again, working on a program to do a similar self-funding program for workers of the lodging industry. And we are trying to put that together in conjunction with, again, a very similar to the, to the TID where it's self-assessed. And the reason that's important is if we go to a TOT bump and the city assesses that, that is, you know, down the road somewhere, when budgets aren't as good, that money can be taken away. If it's self-assessed by the industry, then they must keep it within housing. And that's, it's an important part of the equation. There's, this may take some legislation to get done at the state level, but it's a way for us to make sure that we can implement programs, again, for either rental assistance or homeownership for that part of that tourist dollar that we haven't been able to solve.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question?
Yeah. As you all know, Napa has emerged as an important tourist destination. How are you going to balance the interests of the local community and tourism?
Okay, that's a great question. So like I was saying earlier, when a guest stays in the Napa Valley, they are assessed a 14% tax at the checkout stand. And we keep hearing it is self-imposed. Well, what they mean is that the biggest hotels have, with the most rooms, have the most influence. And they've agreed to this tax and it applies to all of the hotels, okay? And it is not an option for the guest. Do you want to pay it, okay? It is collected by the city. And this whole thing had to be approved by our Napa County Board of Supervisors and the city of Napa. And they have resolutions where they have oversight over this agency. This agency, Visit Napa Valley, it actually, the money comes into the city and then it goes to the Napa Valley Tourist Corporation where Clay Gregory is on the board of directors. Then it goes to Visit Napa Valley where Clay Gregory is on the board of directors. And he makes more money than anybody there, over $300,000 a year before his bonuses. Then they move more money over to something called Flavor Napa Valley, another $700,000, where again, this guy Clay Gregory is on the board of directors. And nobody on our city council is watching how all this money is going. And we need to rein it in, collect the whole 14% at the checkout stand in the city of Napa. Earmark 4% of that towards workforce housing. Then we need to take a look at some of the rest of that money, okay, that's going into the city's coffers and that can be allocated to repair our crumbling roads and sidewalks throughout Napa.
Thank you.
Tourism, tourism, tourism is extraordinarily important to our economy. Obviously, it's already been said. It generates $80 million in tax revenues for our county annually. It's also really important because it provides about, a little over 13,000 jobs. The challenge, though, is that we have to balance being a world-class destination with keeping that small-town feel that we have in Napa. And more importantly, we have to provide a good quality of life for our residents. And we need to make sure those 13,000 people have a place to call home. Right now, I think we're not balancing those needs. We're putting too much emphasis on tourism and to some extent, we are catering to tourists instead of providing basic services to locals. The most important issue that locals have said that they're concerned about is affordable housing and housing affordability. Just behind that is traffic and roads. And in fact, in the most recent community survey, the city found that 26% of residents think we're on the right track. 37% think we're on the wrong track. A big part of that is the poor state, of course, of our roads and our sidewalks. But it has a lot to do, I think, with placing too high a value on tourism.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. We need to be investing back into our residents. That is one of my priorities. Investing into our communities, we need, we need the tourism industry. And yes, we need to ride a fine line and make sure that we also support our local community. We need, we need to invest in our roads, sidewalks. We need to invest in our roads, sidewalks, there are discussions to increase the TOT tax to provide housing that's affordable. We need to go to tourism, to the tourism industry as well, so our workforce and residents benefit from successes of the tourism and lodging industry. TOT tax is the second most revenue, the revenue generator of the general fund. And we need to make sure that we start using that money for our community as well. I want to make sure that there are good amenities. I want to know what amenities we have, what social services we have, and what social services we need to provide to our community. I'm the candidate that will reinvest into our community.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything to add to the discussion right now?
I'd like to add. So, when we look at the revenues coming in, we have property tax, sales tax, and TOT tax. And if you look at the projected growth, TOT tax is at 16% for the next year, and property sales tax at 4%. So, that tells you where our focus is. But having TOT tax and having tourism, it is a good thing for our economy, but also brings some cons to that. But we can leverage that to help our community, we can help to reinvest in our community. So, if we have a healthy growth in TOT, we don't need to increase the tax, but we can assign a percentage of that back to the resources to help the struggling families and the people on the streets. And, you know, 4% sales tax, that tells me that our businesses are struggling, they're not growing. If TOT has grown at 16% and our businesses are not, then that's going to hurt our local economy. That means that people are leaving, they're not shopping local. By the way, I got to tell you to please shop local. As a local business owner and a community member, we need to support each other. So, before you hit that buy on Amazon, think about going to your local store and please shop local. Because that 4%, we would really like to see at 6% or 8% or 10% growth for the next following years. So, our focus is TOT, and it can be a good thing if we leverage it correctly to reinvest in our community.
So, in 2012, this TID tax that came in, $1 million was spent so that Visit Napa Valley could be known as the official wine region of the America's Cup. And this was done under Councilman Peter Mott's watch, and I'm wondering if he feels that million-dollar investment to the America's Cup, if we got it back. Did anybody from the America's Cup take a nap? Do you feel that was the highest use of the funds?
Let me address James' comment. Again, I want to be clear, the city charges a 12%, transit occupancy tax, bed tax, whatever you want to call it. The industry, the hotel industry in the county, the entire county, voted to self-impose a 2% Tourism Improvement District, this is what TID stands for, a Tourism Improvement District Fund that is added to our TOT tax. The city of Napa has no jurisdiction. The TID board has a member, the city of Napa has a member on the TID board, but the majority of the TID board are members of the hotel industry. It is, and can only be used for tourism destination advertising. That's why you see the city of San Diego on your TV screen all the time, and the city of Monterey, and recently, there was some weird city that's now done a TID. It's done quite often around California and other parts of Denver. Denver is now advertising California. And so, we don't have jurisdiction over that. I would not have spent a million dollars on the America's Cup, but the city council does not have the authority to make that decision. That 2% on top, that 2% additional fund is under their jurisdiction purely.
Would anyone like to add anything to the discussion on this topic?
You know, Peter, you say we don't have jurisdiction over that, but we definitely have influence. If we have 2% that they self-assessed to bring in more money, to bring in, to use that money to bring in more tourists, we can definitely have a conversation about addressing the workforce issues. I mean, talking to the local hotel owners in the local food industry. They're saying, we don't have enough workers because they're leaving, and they don't live here, and it's hard for them to come to our town. So, we can have a conversation. There's nothing wrong with engaging and saying, I know we don't have jurisdiction, but there's a problem that we all have. And the hotel and the food industry are very vocal about this issue. We can work together, and as a council member, I will take lead in having that conversation, say, what can we do about that 2%? Can we take maybe half percent and add it to housing, to low-income housing, so your workers can live here? I mean, those are, there's a solution by having a conversation and trying to get to a place where we can improve.
Just if I can address that real quick. Again, I mentioned just a bit ago, we're having that conversation. We're recommending to the hotel industry, and when I say we, it's not the council, it's a small group, that's recommending to the hotel industry to add a 1% additional self-imposed fund, 1% on top of the 14% to do affordable housing. It means millions of dollars of affordable housing a year specifically for their employees. The challenge is, you can't just universally implement that. It takes some additional legislation from the state level because of fair housing laws and some other issues. So, that work's being done, we're trying to get there. But again, much better for them to self-impose, be able to use that to take care of their employees than have the ability of the city or the other jurisdictions or the county be able to redirect that funding. So, conversation's being had, work's being done on it. I'm hoping we're going to get it done sometime in the next year.
So, who from the city is watching the money on the TID board?
Again, we don't have oversight of that. It doesn't work that way.
I thought you said the city has one member on the board.
Well, who's the member on, yeah, the mayor's a member.
Who's watching the money for us?
The mayor's a member on the board.
We have two minutes until intermission. Do you guys want to continue on this topic or close early? All right, with that, we will have a 15-minute interview. Outside, there are question cards. If you have a question, please fill it out and come back by 7:40. We will resume at 7:45. Thank you for being here for the first half.
I mean, I'm in.
They might have it already, you know, color coordinated.
All right, we about ready to get started again? All right, one clap. So, the next question is on Measure C, and just so the audience knows, I'm just going to read what Measure C is, and we will start on that. Amending the Napa County General Plan and Zoning Code, creating water quality buffer zones within the agricultural watershed zoning district, and restricting tree removal within those zones, strengthening oak removal remediation standards, and establishing a permit program for oak tree removal once 795 acres of oak woodland have been removed. So, the question is, where do you stand on Measure C and why? And we will start with James Hinton.
Deforestation has become a big, big problem here. Years ago, before I was born, people used to come here to look at the Napa River because it was pristine, it was clean, you could see the fish and the habitat that were going up and down the river. And through all these projects that we've seen come through, the deforestation for vineyards has led to Napa River's decline. And if we don't do something to stop this, it's going to get worse because the Board of Supervisors has gone from about under 100 wineries to 500 in the last decade, and they are approving projects at alarming pace. So, in 2016, they first made this attempt, and I collected over 500 signatures, most of them from in front of Whole Foods, to get this on the ballot. And it was deemed later on by a court illegal because some of the language where they referred to another measure wasn't right, they had to have all of it on there. So, they did it again this year, we collected the signatures, it's on the ballot. Is the legislation perfect? Probably not. But it is a step in the right direction to curb this kind of development that is hurting our water. And right now, the Millikan watershed is our cleanest drinking water. Napa gets its water from three sources, the California State Project, Millikan, and Lake Hennessy. And Millikan is our cleanest, purest water. So, if we let them take down all the trees at the top of that watershed and put in their vineyards, every time it rains, that soil is going to be coming down the hill into our water with whatever kind of pesticides or chemicals they're using. So, I am in full support of Measure C. It's a beginning to stop deforestation.
Thank you. We'll move on to Mary.
We have reached a crisis at the county level with, regarding what steps we should take to actually protect our environment. A few years ago, when I was on council, we made the decision as a city to push the county on the watersheds, on protecting our watersheds. And the result was a joint city and county study of the Millikan and Hennessy watersheds, which right now is about 60% complete. In an ideal world, we'd be making decisions and law after we get that study, after we get the science and the facts. But because there are so many people who are upset with how our leaders are dealing with these issues, we have an initiative that does the wrong things for the right reasons. There was an independent legal analysis done on the measure, which showed a significant likelihood that Measure C could be challenged on several different issues. I think it's a 70-page report about all of the issues with the measure. It overwhelmingly showed the flaws and ambiguities in the text. But the way the process works, as long as you meet the procedural requirements of the Elections Code, the board has to put it on the ballot. So, one of the biggest issues with Measure C in my mind is that there are some ambiguities about which size buffer zone applies to a property. So, property owners, as a result, are going to have a difficult time figuring it out, which could lead to unintentional violations. And violations are subject to criminal, civil, and administrative penalties. An example of one of the ambiguities, after you reach the 795-acre point and you have to get a permit, if you want to remove more than 10 trees within one year, you have to apply for a use permit. You can't get a use permit unless one of the 10 exceptions applies, or if the permit allows removal of no more than five oak trees in 10 years. In other words, if one of the exceptions doesn't apply, you can get a permit to remove 10 trees, but only if you comply with the contradictory requirement that not more than, that you remove not more than five trees in 10 years. I'm sorry, but we deserve better laws than that.
Thank you.
Although this is a county issue, I haven't taken a position on it yet. I've been meeting with groups of people, listening, studying the issue and the measure. I most importantly want to wait till April 16th, where the Democrats in Napa Valley are going to be having the pros and cons, the proponents of yes on sea and no on sea. The important thing to remember here is that everyone wants to make sure that our water supply in Napa County is protected. Everyone wants to make sure that our trees and woodlands are protected. As your next city council member, I want to ensure that we continue to educate and involve the public in the stewardship of the area's natural resources, just like it's highlighted in the general plan, and partner with county, school districts, and others to participate in community habitat enhancement work programs, as also highlighted in the general plan, and encourage the planting of native plant species in natural habitats and enhance plant and wildlife habitats in the city. Thank you.
You know, our environment is just as important as our economy. And as I'm driving around town, I see no on sea, and I see yes on sea. But what I also see is the passion of our community to voice their concerns about our environment. But I think what's important is, we need to bring everybody together about this issue and how to properly protect our environment. We need to bring all the cities and the counties and take the passion that you have for yes on sea and get more facts to properly protect our environment together, all of us. Not the me versus you effect, but how can we make the Measure C even better that benefits both our economy and our environment at the same time? So, I just, I don't think the initiative is the best process. I'd like to see a better version of it and working together more collaboratively.
So, are you for or against it?
At this moment, I'd say, I'd like to see a better version, so be against this current initiative.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, Measure C is a really difficult proposition. I'm, I haven't taken a stance on this yet either. I'm concerned about the language in the measure and what it accomplishes. That being said, I also believe that the county needs to do more in terms of their efforts to protect our watersheds. And I believe they need to work, to reevaluate their erosion control plans. I think they need to consider a more robust monitoring program. And so, you know, I'm kind of waiting to see how some of that shakes out and have some more conversations. It's a little, it concerns me because I think it's getting very politicized, and that's, we've already seen it in the courts, and that's unfortunate, but that's sort of the nature of land use. And so, I'm waiting, I'm still having conversations with some of the supervisors, but there is definitely work to be done in watershed protection. And so, you know, whether this passes or fails, the goals it seeks to accomplish need to still be accomplished.
Thank you. In time, we're not going to open up debate on this question. We will move on to Measure D, unless there is significant audience interest on this specific issue. Well, can we move on to Measure D? Move on? Okay. So, next one, we will move on to Measure D, and do we all know what it is in the audience? Okay, I'm going to read it real quick. Amending Napa County Code, Section 18, amending Napa County Code to disallow the use of personal airports and helipads and to limit the circumstances under which helicopter takeoffs and landings in support of direct agricultural activities may take place. We will start this time with Ricky. We'll start with Ricky to answer this question.
Well, just leave it simple. I haven't taken a position on this.
Okay, we'll move on to Bernie.
Yeah, I'm not, I haven't really looked at to Measure D. I've heard a little bit about it, but not enough to take a position of it. So, I'm going to pass and come back at a later time to, you know, get more information and make a decision on it.
Thank you.
This one I have studied, and I'm completely against the additional heliports in the valley.
Thank you.
Okay, I wish, well, this issue has been talked about a lot in our community. I've been to many meetings at the Napa County Board of Supervisors. I've heard from the people that are pursuing a helicopter pad right now, the Palmoz. I've heard their consultants testify, much like the people who are opposing Measure C. The people that are opposing the helicopters are using misinformation. They claim that his helicopter is quieter than a Tesla. So, when we think about these wineries that want to get helicopter pads, you have to think about what are they going to use that for? Are we going to be seeing wine tours of people being escorted from the Napa Airport to these elite boutique wineries on a helicopter? Is that what we're going to be waking up to Saturday morning instead of hot air balloons, helicopter rides? If somebody wants to have a helicopter pad, go move out to the airport. Buy a spot next to the airport and build it out there. But to come out to these neighborhoods like they are out off of Hagan Road, where families have been out there for decades, and this guy wants to put in a personal airport, that's what a helicopter pad is, it's a personal, it's an airport that's going to be in this area. So, Measure D would make this type of land use illegal here in Napa. So, I am going to vote yes on Measure D to stop the threat of helicopters from invading our beautiful Napa Valley skyways.
Thank you.
So, there's such a threat of helicopters taking over our valley. Do you know how many applications there have been in the history of applications for helicopter pads in Napa? Three. One, there's just the one that's currently pending, the Palmoz one, that's what this initiative is all about. I don't think the initiative process is the appropriate tool to solve this. You know, we're putting in a nail with a jackhammer instead of a hammer. I am opposed to this.
Well, if you're opposed to this, I mean, we have a problem here in Napa where if somebody leaves office early, they fill these seats by appointment. And if you don't... And if you don't, why, why not appreciate the initiative process? If, if over 3,000 people from Napa sign their name on an initiative that says, "We do not want helicopter pads permitted throughout Napa County," why don't you like that process? If you were appointed to the Napa Board of Supervisors, would you approve the Palmas helipad?
No.
All right. With that, we will close discussion on Measure D, and we're going to move on to the audience questions. We've got a good amount of them, a lot of questions. I wish we can go through all of them. We picked out a couple, and I'm going to read the first one. According to Cope Family Center, 360 cases of child abuse were reported last year in Napa. That is almost one a day. What do you feel we can do better as a community to lower the cases of child abuse in Napa? And we will start with Vice Mayor Mott.
Just want to have heard that statistic, which is upsetting, honestly. You know, so again, a little bit of a challenge in terms of the, the forum we're in, where we're, we're running candidates for the City Council, and most of the social services programs are under the Board of Supervisors in the county. That being said, I think, I think we certainly need more awareness of what is going on specifically in our community. I'm, you know, fully aware and, and know about Cope, and I'm the vice mayor, and yet I'm not aware of these statistics in, in, in our community. So, you know, if there's, I think that's the, the greatest need, is to be able to figure out that, that, that ability to get out and make people more aware, because I believe we certainly have a community that, as I talked about earlier, where there would be efforts among everybody to, to make a difference, to, to reduce it.
Thank you.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yeah. According to Cope Family Center, 360 cases of child abuse were reported last year in Napa. That is almost one a day. What do you feel we can do better as a community to lower the cases of child abuse in Napa?
Well, I mean, if there's been that many reported, I mean, what are the police doing to address these reports? I think if I was on the City Council, I would form a Citizens Advisory Task Force, where I would have the police chief with a, a member that is appointed from the Napa City Council to take on the situation, to have meetings, town halls, to bring in experts, to take a look at what other cities have done to combat this issue, what are the best practices that we could do in Napa. But if these numbers are real, I, I would, I would be talking to our police department and our sheriff department about what they're doing to, to answer these calls, to check on them, to make sure if somebody is abusing children in Napa, that they are incarcerated and stopped. So if, if this number is true and so forth, I, I think we should form a task force to deal with it and find the best practices.
Thank you.
To some extent, the city doesn't have a lot of power over it. Social services are a function of the county, but the city does play a role in the process, as evidenced by the Kayleigh Schleser case. I mean, that's a, that was a terrible incident where the police department did get involved with, with such a case. And it's a tragedy, but, you know, I think James is right. I think we need to look into it. I think we need to do more research into what's causing this problem in our community, and also look at, at what other communities are doing to solve the problem. And I think information is power. I think information, finding the information and getting it out to the community is probably the best thing that we can do.
Thank you.
It's interesting, because this is the place that I work at, and I'm glad that this question came up. I've taken an active role in ensuring that child abuse is prevented in our community at all levels, and there are already, there's already a task force called the Child Abuse Prevention Council, run by Cope Family Center, where we have members from the district attorney, from probation, and faith-based organizations, where we tackle these, these issues. Matter of fact, this month is Child Abuse Prevention Month. That's why I'm wearing my pin, which is called Blue Ribbon Month. In the downtown community, we've reached out to a lot of downtown businesses to continue provide advocacy and awareness of this issue, and there's a few businesses that have been supporting. We've also reached out to city council members and supervisors to let them know about upcoming events that have been, that have been happening. Matter of fact, we had a resilient screening that talked about childhood, childhood adverse experiences and the effects of it, and how we could be a resilient community to support people that have gone through this. Only one supervisor showed up for a few minutes. That is unacceptable. If we're really serious about this, we need to make sure that we continue working with our public safety officials and all levels of, of our community.
Thank you. And the next question is on housing.
I gotta, I haven't answered that.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay. It's all right. I'm quietly listening over here, but I'm paying attention. You know, this breaks my heart. One child abuse is one too many. And, you know, we have, you know, Cope that does a good job with helping families and educating parents how to be good parents, but there, there is an effect with children are abused and how they look, how they're going to develop as adults. And it's important to create mentors. You know, I've been a big brother for many years, and it's important to mentor, to set a good example, you know, to, one, prevent it if we can. Unfortunately, it's a very hard thing to do, to, to prevent it, but we can continue to fight and support Cope to continue that fight, to teach parents and create better families. But when we identify the, the children, you know, it's important to, to step up as a community and be a mentor, so that, that child can build trust again with adults and become a, a good adult. And, you know, that's what I've been doing for the last several years is, you know, my process trying to be a big brother was heartbreaking, because there was, were seven kids that I had to choose from. Sorry, this is really, I'm not an emotional guy, but I'm, I'm on stage right now, so bear with me. There was two of me, and I chose Latinos Big Brothers because I want to make a positive influence in, in young Latinos. And the stories I heard were just heartbreaking, you know? And they, they, what they do, they match you with the personality type, and there was three kids I had to pick from. I mean, it was so hard to pick, to, you know, these kids had challenges from broken families to, to abuse kids, that kids, if they don't have a mentor, then who knows where they, they'd be in life. And they stopped accepting young Latinos, you know, Latino women and, and, and kids, because there wasn't enough adults stepping up to be a mentor, you know? And that's something, as a, as a city council person, you know, you can't vote on that, but definitely will use influence to, to help other people to step up.
Thank you. The next question is on housing. If 46,000 people work in the wine industry and 13,000 in hospitality, how can you supply homes for these 59,000 people? Will you advocate high-rise buildings like the Salesforce Tower in San Francisco? And we will start with Mary.
That seems a little out of place in Napa, but I like the idea of providing housing for people who are in the hospitality industry. I was just talking to chef Charlie Palmer recently. I got to meet him. He just opened his restaurant in downtown, and he's working on a project right now where he is, they're, you know, they're putting together a hotel, and as part of it, they're also putting in, next to it, a dormitory-style building for the hospitality workers who are working there. And it's, it's brilliant, it's easy, it's something that we could do to address this problem, and I think it's something we need to be considering. It doesn't have to be a, you know, 50-story, high-rise building, but we could start going up downtown, and I think we need to. We need to look at our density, and we need to start thinking outside the box.
Thank you. Ricky?
Yeah, I think we definitely need to have greater density buildings. Sky rises, I don't know, but we need to make sure that we do, and that, that we use whatever space available. There's the RUL, there's the Act Preserve that limits us very much so as to building new housing, but there's still an opportunity to, to do it. And we need to make sure that the VITNERS, they've done a great job in supporting our community through providing housing and funding, but we need to make sure as we continue to start developing more hotels in our community, that we are looking at lodging industry as well, and make sure that we have workforce housing for our community. Again, we need to have people that work where they live. It's simple as that. I will make sure that I'm an advocate for that.
Thank you.
Can you repeat the question?
Yeah. If 46,000 people work in the wine industry and 13 in hospitality, how can you supply homes for those 59,000 people? Will you advocate high-rise buildings like the Salesforce Tower in San Francisco?
Well, one of the things I'd like to address, and I was talking to somebody in the member of the audience, is, you know, it's, it's hard to live in Napa in such, some, some of these jobs because it's such low wage. But how do you address that? You know, in my experience, when I was growing up with my, my family, we, we all had low-wage jobs, but the only way to move up was through opportunities. Taking advantage of those opportunities, building your skill level, getting better, earning more, you know, and, and be able to find a place to live where you work. And, you know, a lot of people don't have the opportunity, so as a councilman, we have to create those opportunities. And it goes back to what I said earlier, is design, how we design buildings to, to create more density, but in a way that is lower cost. We, we encourage the builder to, to design for, for our needs and identify the areas within the city that we can encourage more density. You know, as we develop the, the city, city, the new city, city hall, we're going to use swing space. One swing space area is the corporate yard on Lincoln and South School, and I really like that place for higher-density housing once we done using it for swing space. If that, you know, if we end up using it for swing space, that's the conversation. But that area will be a great place, because we have high-density roads, we have a neighboring business community, and there's not necessarily neighbors right around there. So we identify these areas, we aggressively go after these areas so we can build for our workforce.
Thank you.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, you know, we need to work on solutions. We, we can't, we can't affordable housing our way out of this. One, the funding's too, too restricted, it's too hard to build enough units. So when you hear those numbers, we have to be building, or we have to be finding ways to create solutions that put people into market-rate housing, first-time homebuyer programs, and market-rate apartments. The county and the, and the, the vineyard owners came up with a program, CSA4 program, that self-taxes them based on how much acres they have to, to create housing, again, for, for vineyard workers. That's the kind of creative solutions we need here, because most of the hotel rooms are going to be built in the city of Napa. That's part of our agreement with the county. And so as we build more hotel rooms here and have more of that lodging industry here, we need to solve that with the industry. And again, this is what I'm working on in terms of a self-taxing program, similar to the CSA4 program, that will let them self-tax themselves and put that money aside, but not for just affordable housing, for, for first-time homebuyer programs for their employees, for subsidy, rental subsidy programs, so that they can go into market-rate housing and not, you know, still be challenged to try to put a family of five into a, you know, a three-bedroom house or a two-bedroom house, because that's the only affordable housing they can get. So it's got to be a different solution. We have, these numbers are too big just to work through the Affordable Housing Program part of it. We need to work with the industries themselves to create new solutions, again, that will partner with them, and they recognize it. They, if they create housing, they get better employees. If they create housing that people own, they get lifetime employees, because those people are going to stay here in our community. They're going to go to our schools, which is another problem, because they're losing so many students. So again, those are the solutions that I'm working on, that we have to ask the county to help with and, and solve this problem.
Thank you.
So there is going to be a chance in November to vote to repeal the state law, Costa Hawkins, which put a moratorium of having comprehensive rent control on commercial apartment buildings. So if you're going to build these apartment buildings in Napa, we need to vote to repeal Costa Hawkins, so the city council can protect the service workers that are going to be renting these, these rooms, so that they know that when they get off work after 40 hours a week, they're going to have enough money to pay their rent and to pay their insurance payments, make sure they can furnish food for their children and so forth. So if you really want to take care of the service workers, not only do we have to build these infill, high-end, I don't know how big the property is in San Francisco, but we can go as high as the hotels are going in Napa. If you're going to build a hotel that high, you should be able to build a housing unit that high. And I think we need to take a look at this whole Airbnb movement. We've lost a lot of houses to the Airbnb. People who can have the access to the money are buying up the houses, and they are not going to service workers, they're going to people who are on vacation and are coming here. Our housing stock is going, because we have this model where people can buy a house, turn it into an Airbnb, and make a profit. And this is taking our houses off the market. If we continue to look the other way, while people are buying up the houses and turning it Airbnb, our housing problems are going to grow for service workers here in Napa.
Thank you. And the final question for the night is, are you for or against the proposed Napa Civic Center complex and why? And we will start with Bernie.
So this is a very comprehensive project that the city has put a lot of time into. And if we don't build it, the cost to renovate the current city hall would be about $77 million from revenue, from, from our funds that we haven't created new revenue for. And, and we continue to pay for maintenance of that building and the other buildings that we're going to look to consolidate, we're going to spend a lot of money to, for those leases. So at some point, we're going to have to build a new city hall. Right now, interest rates are low. At some point, we will, or keep renovating an old building. So, you know, I, I like the city hall project, you know, as a elected council member, I will look at it closely, make sure that the funds we use to construct this stays in, in, in our local economy. I want a local job force to, to work there and make sure that there's benefits to, to our local economy, you know? So right now, I'm, I'm for it.
Thank you.
Well, as I sit on the council, and I've been voting for it, I'm for it. I will tell you that this is the, the most expensive and the most complex projects we've ever done in the city of Napa. We, and Bernie's done his homework, he's exactly right. We have deteriorating facilities, we're spread out throughout the community. We either have to keep putting Band-Aids and keep putting Band-Aids till all the Band-Aids fall off, or we have to commit to doing something new. Our, this is the third, in 12 years, this is the third city hall I've seen. So the others didn't get this far, but we proposed them, we talked about them, and we ultimately didn't move forward because the economy wasn't strong enough, because other issues had to be addressed first, or, or, you know, again, a city hall is the last thing that you want to vote to approve in your community, because there's always more to do for the community. That being said, we believe that we put together a very strong program, and, and it takes a lot of charts to show, although you can see it all online, but where, as the super block gets developed, and we do bond financing, and we, and we, we fund the, the city hall, there is a crossover point about 12 years out, where the revenue coming in pays for the expenses of developing the city hall. So this isn't 30 years of paying and, and, and not getting any return on it, where you, if, like you're building your house. We have a, we have a crossover point 12 years out, where that revenue is, sustains the, the cost of the bond financing and, and the funding required to do it. We have staff that is in ridiculously decrepit facilities with boxes everywhere. It's not how they should be, have to work. We need to find new facilities. I think we're doing a beautiful job. I am concerned of what, we haven't got the, the construction cost yet, and I'm very nervous about that, but we will be seeing about that, but we will be seeing that later on this year, and then we'll have to make a decision.
Thank you.
So this has been a hot topic for my campaign. I have a couple videos on Facebook discussing this, this issue. I've been to all the meetings where they've been talking about it, and I keep asking some questions to the council that they don't want to answer. Councilman Mott just said that the revenue coming in from the hotel is going to pay for the new ivory tower. And what I'm asking is, who is the hotel developer? Does the city have a developer? And if not, why don't they? They they put out this RFP about two years ago. Several hotels have looked at it and dropped it. Why are hotel developers dropping this opportunity to build a hotel in the middle of our downtown? There are a ton of projects backed up at the planning department for new hotels. So why doesn't anybody want to take on this project? Do they have a residential developer? And a big question is, is this, it's called the super block. There's going to be a civic center that houses everybody of our services on one corner, and then the current block with city hall and the police station, that's going to be turned in to the super block with the two-hundred-and-seventy-five hotel and one-hundred-and-ten rooms. So is that project prevailing wage or not? That's a question everybody wants to know. Is the super block a prevailing wage project or not? Why is, who is the hotel developer? Who is the residential developer? And these questions are not being answered at the city council. The mayor's not answering it, Peter Mott's not answering it. Nobody is answering the questions. So another problem's come up. The fires have made the cost of building go up because Silverado Country Club is paying a premium price to draw builders out there to build custom homes. So even if the city's paying prevailing wage, are they going to be able to draw the workforce in to build this?
Thank you.
So this project is a great opportunity for all of the city buildings in the downtown core to be consolidated. It's a project that could provide good, well-paying jobs and affordable housing. Unfortunately, instead of keeping the project simple and focused, the city has brought in a private developer and given them a long list of things to accomplish in the project, a list that's been growing every day. Originally, the plan was to build a new city hall. Great. Then we added a police station. Okay. Then we moved it to another block so that we could put up a hotel to, on the current site, to help pay for the project. And we're going to have to build out temporary office spaces while we wait at the cost of over three million dollars, probably a lot more. And we're going to have to build out a temporary police station now on Jefferson Street. Then we added a new fire department. Then instead of consolidating, we're actually going to expand the square footage of office space that we need. And then we added a two-hundred-and-seventy-one space parking garage to Clay Street. And then to make the affordable housing advocates like me happy, they added a hundred units of housing. And then to keep the locals happy, they added a grocery store and a restaurant and a bar. And while everybody's head is spinning trying to keep up with what's going on in this very complex project, the costs of construction have gone up and up. When this was, we were first talking about this when I was on city council, and it was a fifty-million-dollar project to build a new city hall. Great. Now it's a hundred-and-ten million dollars minimum, and that's not even, as Pete said, including all of the construction costs, which are, which are probably going to be more. And that's just with the city hall, that's not the super block site. We don't need another hotel or a restaurant or a bar. We don't need to move the fire department. We don't need this project to be so big if all we're trying to do is build a new city hall. So to answer your question, it's more than just a yes or no question. Yes, I do want a new city hall. We, I think our city deserves it. But no, I don't agree with the project as it's currently designed.
Thank you.
There's definitely deteriorating infrastructure within the city limits, and some of those include our city services. So I I believe that we really need to consolidate some of those services, such as the city hall provides, to ensure that the delivery, the delivery of quality services to the community are as efficient. The civic center construction costs have definitely gone up. Last time I checked, they were about ninety million dollars. So here in a hundred-and-ten, it's a, it's a little, little startling to hear. It's going to be an expensive commitment, but I definitely do want to make sure that our community and our public get the most that they they need and that they should get, and that our city staff are equipped with the appropriate equipment to deliver their services. Also, with the police department, been having a few conversations with a couple people, and we, after the 2014 earthquake, we definitely need some support. And with the growing staff of the police department, we need to make sure that we have them staffed and that they have the deliveries and services that they they need. So I'll leave it at that. It is, it's a very hard and complex issue, but as it stands right now, I'm undecided.
Thank you. We are getting close to our allotted ending time, but we will open up a debate for a few minutes, and then there'll be closing statements from each candidate, a brief ending. So we will go over about ten, fifteen minutes, if that's okay with everybody. So does anyone want to open?
All right. Let me respond to a couple of things real quick. So, and this will be very hard to do in two minutes. So this project's done under the umbrella of what's called DEBFAB, which is Design, Build, Operate, and Design, Build, Finance, Operate, and Maintain. That is a construction sort of plan that says, we pick, and we have a choice of two different people, and we laid out everything, including what they had to include and what what we need. Here's what we need. But we don't tell them exactly how they have to do every part of it. They get to pick their own team, we had to approve it. So that we picked the plenary group, they have to design, they have to come up with the, with the design-build program. Design-build means you get time to kind of work things out and find out what works. Finance means you can add and subtract parts as they go along. What they have to do is come back to the city council regularly and show us updates about how they're accomplishing all these different things. We have dead-end dates as we go along where they have to do certain things, certain design dates. The fact is, they had a hotel operator from, almost from the get-go, and a housing developer, but as it went along, they didn't like those two parts, their two partners, and they dropped them, and they, they are now with, looking at new partners for both aspects of that, of that part of the project. They're close to selecting a hotel flag for it. It just isn't done yet. You can't answer because we don't have one yet.
Okay.
They don't have one yet. So just the rest of it is, the, it's, the best way I can put this is it's a work in project, progress. They're not required to get all this detail to us till a little bit further down the road. They're required to meet certain mandates and certain timelines.
Is it prevailing wage?
Thank you.
That hasn't been established yet outside of, the city hall is prevailing wage. It hasn't been established where they're doing prevailing wage on the super block yet.
Does any other candidate want to briefly speak on this?
I noticed Ricky Hurtado mentioned that it would increase the city's ability to provide services. That's never been proven. Having the Parks and Rec and the Water Department under one roof, there's no proof that that improves the city's ability to provide services. And when you talk about the police station, from the police that I've talked to, and they come all the time at the shopping center when I'm collecting signatures, and after we get done talking about my right to be there, we always talk about, what's it like to be a police officer in Napa? And what do you think about the new police station? So the police that I've talked to, they'd like to stay in the station they're at, they'd like to fix up some of the the holes in the wall and refurbish it, but they like to have their privacy. A lot of times, they could be bringing somebody back to interrogate them, and they might not want to be subjecting these people to the Parks and Rec Department or the Water Department and so forth. And I feel we should be just, if the police need, department needs to fix a hole in the wall or something like that needs to be patched up, and their building needs to be refurbished, I think we'd be better off doing that than trying to get this civic center where we have, because, you know, part of the project of the civic center is housing the police vehicles where they all have this secured parking on this one little block along with everybody else. And it's really hard to manage this. So I think we're better off just to fix up where we're at now with the police and stay there.
Thank you. I know, I think Mary wants to talk real quick.
I just want to ask everybody in here, please go to the website. It's www.nappaciviccenter.com. Read about it. It's a really complex project. It changes, I think, every week. But see for yourself, we're, we as a community need to be paying attention to this. I feel like it's getting pushed through very quickly, and people aren't allowed to question what's going on, and there really hasn't been a lot of community discussion about it. And it's probably the biggest project like this that our community's ever seen. And we're about to go into extreme debt to pay for it. And we're getting to the point now where we can't stop this train. We need to pay attention, and we need to pay attention right now.
Thank you. Ricky? Bernie?
No, I would want to clarify your question earlier because I thought you opened up for discussion and other issues, other.
I just want to give each candidate one last chance to talk on this, then we'll go to closing remarks. So if you want, okay. Ricky, you want to, okay. We will start off with James Hinton on a two-minute closing of why you should be elected to city council.
Well, I've been going to virtually every city council meeting for the last four years. I've been to a lot of board of supervisors' meetings, almost all of them. I've been to lots of planning commission meetings, school board meetings. This is my fourth time hanging out with the trustee from our college board. I've been to the first three college board meetings this year in January, February, and March, trying to follow the action on the college bond they're pursuing. And whether or not you vote for me or somebody else for city council, I'm going to keep going back to the city council every meeting, no matter what, to keep advocating for changes that are going to improve our community. A lot of people aren't willing to tackle tough issues and take brave steps forward, like regulating cannabis or building higher homes, asking that there be more affordable housing and and making sure these, these details in the contracts. I'm going to be looking at these details. And if I'm your city council member, you know, my voice is going to be stronger, and we're going to have a better chance at securing better deals for our city in the future, especially on our water. We really need to take a look at our water and make sure that we preserve it, that we make sure that when we process it and clean it, that we're not leaving any chemicals in there that are going to be detrimental to us and our kids and our animals. We really got to watch this stuff because our water quality is deteriorating, and there's no guarantee that we won't have more droughts in the future and so forth. So I'm really running because I grew up here. I went to school here. I go to these meetings. I'm not going anywhere, you know. There's a cement factory trying to come in on the Napa River up in Vallejo. I'm out in Vallejo trying to stop that project, too. There are refineries trying to get expanded permits right across the mouth of the Napa River, Phillips Six Six. I'm trying to stop those, too. I mean, there's a lot we can do. I have a lot of endorsements throughout the Bay Area from elected members for the Richmond City Council, the mayor of Dixon, members of the Vallejo School Board, and I'm going to keep working to solve these regional issues.
Thank you.
My turn. Having worked the past decade with families, businesses, and individuals here in Napa, I truly understand what the challenges are that our community faces, and I have real solutions. I have the passion, the experience, and the skills to do the job, and I look forward to earning your vote. Thank you so much for having us tonight, and remember to vote because that's how we control the future of our city.
Thank you.
Just wanted to take the time to thank the college and the student government for providing and giving us this opportunity to all of us, to all the candidates. I'm a lifelong Nappen who is ready to provide a fresh perspective here in our city council. As being the youngest candidate in this field here, I want to make sure that we provide an opportunity to all members of our community. Living through poverty here in our Napa Valley, I know firsthand what those tough challenges are. Living as an immigrant, I know what those tough challenges are. Living as a son of a farm worker, I know what those tough challenges are. I know what our whole community needs, and I need to make sure, and I will make sure that I'm the voice for all of you. As I continue my campaign for Napa City Council, my number one priority here is to listen to you, the voters, the residents of the city of Napa, about concerns, challenges, or issues you face in your neighborhood or in the city of Napa. I'm committed to working hard for all of our community, for your interests, and I look, look forward really to meeting you as I continue going door-to-door, listening to issues. And I hope you join our campaign because our campaign is a voice of our community. This is a campaign from the community and for the community, as having been someone who was born and raised here in the city of Napa. Thank you, and I hope to earn your support.
Thank you.
Stand up. Been sitting down too long. I just want to thank everybody for for being here in the college, for this opportunity to to address you and why I'm running. You know, as I mentioned earlier, I'm running because of the opportunities the city gave my family and me. And as a rock war veteran, as a business owner, as a father, and as a homeowner, there's a lot of issues that concern me, from helping veterans to helping people become homeowners and protecting our local businesses. There's a lot of things that concern me, and I have, I have the experience to follow up with those issues and find a solution with all of you. It's all of you I want to work with. I want to work for you. So when you vote, think about checking that box next to Bernie because all I want to do is get back to the committee. I feel it's a civic duty to serve all of you. I'm not doing this for, as a stepping stone to higher office or to be popular. I'm doing this to give back to my community, to work for you with passion and honor as I served in my country, and I want to serve for, I want to serve Napa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, let me say that, again, I hope you appreciate the passion that everybody up here has. Running for office is a difficult thing to do. I've done it a number of times, and and so I appreciate them being up here. It's great to see young people, the, and the passion about running for office. The challenge to that is, is that you're still involved in families, you're still involved in your businesses. It takes a great deal of time to learn and understand the workings of of the city. We talked just barely about the city hall project. I've studied the city hall project now for months and months and months to understand it, and it moves every, every week. It changes. You have to spend the time to do that. I had to work to kind of come up with creative solutions for our problem with with housing, with our hotel properties. I work with and talk with Clay Gregory about that because he understands a lot of that. So you have to create situations where you can work with supervisors, you can work with Bill Dodd and and our assembly member. Those kind of relationships and that ability to create solutions are what makes a strong council member. You have to be able to do the time. And so I'm a, I'm in a place in my life now. My, my kids are grown and in college. I'm reducing my time involved in my business so I can spend more time with the city. And so I hope you will look to me to continue the path that I've been on because I spent a great deal of time, twelve years now, understanding all about sanitation and water and affordable housing and all the issues that come with being involved with the city. And you will have two votes this November. You'll have two opportunities, you'll have two council members to elect. I ask you to make me one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a huge round of applause for the candidates up here tonight? Today marks the beginning on a journey that will continue. As student leaders, we recognize that there is no better involvement than community involvement, and no one better than a community college to involve the community. And it's that very realization that led to tonight's event. Before ending tonight, I want to thank Matt Cowell up in the booth for helping us with planning and designing. I want to recognize the group of students that are responsible for making this event possible. Marcos Cottenado, he is, he's over there, sorry, director of events. It was his planning and persistence that led to tonight's wonderful evening. Illo Jessotico, right over there next to him, he's our director of public affairs. It was his creative mind behind the media outlet for this event, and I'm fortunate enough to moderate tonight. I hope you all have a better understanding of who your candidates are and the issues that Napa is facing. Oh, yeah, Anthony. I want to thank Anthony for timing. Thank you for coming out, and have a good night.